Before we... We'll take the roll call this time then. Clerk will take the roll call.
Commissioner Ames?
Here.
Commissioner Gorgensen?
Here.
Commissioner Piro?
Here.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yep.
Commissioner Beas?
Here.
Commissioner...
Hopla.
Here.
Commissioner Carlson?
Present.
Mayor Pion?
Here.
City Planner Stuckman?
Here.
Okay, before we get into the meeting, there's one thing I want to bring up here. People have been watching us on the Internet or YouTube and they requested that we had... That you address the chair before you speak. Number one, because people listen to this and they don't know who's speaking. So if you address the chair, you know, at that time, I'll give the name of who the person is speaking. This is going to be complicated, more complicated for me too, so I got to look down and make sure I got the right name when I mention which commissioner it is. But anyway, to start off, the first thing we're going to do is approve and amend tonight's meeting agenda on August 24, 2020. Would I like to make this motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the...
Mr. Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. Chair.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting for tonight, agenda for tonight.
Do we have a second, please?
Mr. Chair. I'll second.
Commissioner Carlson?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion at all on this? CNN, I'll call the phone. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carried. The next thing is we're going to approve or amend the meeting minutes of June 22nd, 2021, and the clerk's going to make a... Read a correction to us.
Yes, Chairman Ames, there, page two. The... It's Carlson, the bottom paragraph was listed, it was actually Hopla, so a film.
Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion with this correction?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
I'll make a motion to amend the... And approve the meeting minute from June 22nd, as the court stated.
Do we have a second?
Chair.
Commissioner Pearl?
All right, we'll second that.
Okay. Do we have any further discussion? CNN, we'll call... All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carried. Okay, the first thing is on the agenda is a lot split by the Coons property on 81st, XX181st Avenue Northwest. Don Jensen of DJ2DMJ Planning LLC is requesting approval of three lots split on behalf of the Coons Family Trust. The 40-acre parcel is currently being farmed and located just east of 8301, 181st Avenue. The Coons family wishes to split off a parcel A, which is 11.7 acres, and parcel B, which is 5.0 acres, in order to sell the lots for a single family residential use, living in parcel C, 2342 acres undeveloped farmland. At this time, we'll let our planner present what she has.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you mentioned, this is a 40-acre parcel, it's part of an estate, it's in a trust, so they hired Mr. Jensen to help with the process. He would like to see either a two- or three-lot split. Recommendation for approval tonight would be his goal. As far as staff goes, well, let me propose, show you the layout here. So this is on 181st Avenue, which is a minor arterial street in the county's functional classification plan. It's right adjacent to the Green Walt property, to which most of you are familiar. They recently went through a parcel split. So here's the proposal of 40-acre piece. This large piece parcel A is 11 acres. The smaller piece parcel B would also be sold to potential buyers, and then the parcel C would remain as ag land in the interim. So there's a large wetland on the north side of this property, as well as some smaller wetlands that were identified as part of the wetland delineation. You'll see this street here coming through from the north. That was intended to be a temporary cul-de-sac, but after the wetland laws changed and knowing that this crossing would be so significant, this will likely never happen. So we are not considering that as part of the conversation into the subdivision of this piece. This will just remain as a cul-de-sac. So this concept plan shows the two lots split here. We... I worked with Mr. Jensen, met with him a couple of different times in trying to figure out how the parcels and the properties on each side would end up splitting. They so very graciously came up with this concept. You'll see that they... This is the Green Walt 40 here, of which they split off this tan. They had an existing farmhouse here, and the tan area is, you know, really the only upland, except for where this house is sitting. So they had a little bit less to work with than the Coons property. But at any rate, we required as part of the Green Walt split that they incorporate any future subdivision with the Coons property. They're showing a cul-de-sac coming in here, and then the two lots that they desire as part of the current request. Then they took a look at the Paulson property, which is much larger and creates a connection here with, I believe, Xenola. I can't think of the street name, but it creates a... Critical street connection here for our local streets. So as a staff concern, our ordinance does require connection via local streets, especially to minimize access, direct lot access onto the main arterial roadways and collector's streets. So in speaking with the city engineer, he's not in favor of either of these lots subdividing. I would be more inclined to allow the 11-acre parcel and not the smaller one, because the 11-acre one has a lot easier potential to split in the future. I think we should at least look at a street connection. The applicants have said that it's premature to look into the street connections at this time or plan for those. I agree that, you know, the desirability of an 11-acre lot in now then is kind of the phase or the fad here. And as you know, with our five-acre average, it is more difficult to subdivide a 40 and, you know, make it work monetarily to have any... By the time you pay for a street and then you've got some wetland area and to try to get seven or eight lots out of it, it's pretty tough. So hence the concept you see here, trying to avoid through streets. I guess that does not take... Having said that, this is the conceptual street plan that we had talked about as part of the Green Walt split. Now, you'll see a double row of... Or two streets running through the Paulson property at the time, but if I just jump back to this drawing, this wetland turned out to be significantly larger, or is estimated to be. There has not been a delineation here, but there will likely just be one street running through Paulson's property here. So at any rate, we... The point being that we looked at connectivity between these three parcels, starting in 2017 or 18, when Green Walt came through. This map shows the arterial classification based on Anoka County's plan of 181st. And again, then his other option would be just to split the 11-acre piece off and then leave the remainder as farmland. And then our office prepared... Well, these ordinance references come out of the subdivision ordinance relative to local street service, lots backing up, rearing of lots upon the right-of-way of all major thoroughfares with intersections limited. Permanent cul-de-sacs shall be allowed only where one or more of the following criteria have been met, where topography or physical site conditions warrant such, or a through street is not physically feasible. So we'd like to minimize cul-de-sacs. They are challenging to maintain. And then lastly, direct vehicle vehicular access from individual lots to arterial and collector's streets shall be discouraged and may be prohibited by the city council. So I really just want to open up the conversation with you as a group. I did note in the report that I did not make a recommendation as I typically might. I wanted some feedback from you and did not feel comfortable moving ahead administratively. I am allowed to do a two-lot subdivision administratively, but when it involves streets, it needs to come for discussion. These two concepts just show how a through street could work. You know, we probably have the minimum lot depth here, which is 300 feet, once they give the right-of-way to the county for 181st. It could work, whether you think that is important, you can voice that. Just a couple of different options. One goes up and around. One goes up and around this wetland, and one goes to the south of the wetland. And then lastly, we'll talk about park and trail dedication fees, whether we apply... Whether they pay the fees for two lots or all three lots, being that the largest area, parcel C, will be left as ag land. So with that, let's just open it up for discussion or any others questions you may have, or Mr. Chair, if you'd like to give the applicant the opportunity to speak, you may also do
Is there anything the applicant would like to say? Just turn on the mic there, please. Turn screen, it's okay.
There you go. Yes, Mr. Chair, Mr. Ames, Donald Jensen representing the Coons Trust here. We certainly like to be able to elaborate a little bit more. We have a lot of information that was submitted and put in front of you in an effort to try to provide our take on what would happen east and west. We really tried to affirm that this is an administrative lot split, and a lot of the discussion is dealing with kind of plating ideas or long-range development. Part of the concerns at this location of the now-and-then community is you do have 181st, you do have a lot of wetlands immediately north of this. The notion that it's tying into a series of other properties for neighborhooding and connectivity is, as you can see by looking at the maps and you've driven by the property, I'm sure, fairly well limited in a couple of different ways. I would suggest the environmental sensitivity is, in fact, an important couple of words that is in both ordinance, but in practicality, staff has pointed out of the septic system, preliminary information we provided so that of the choices that homebuyer would have for where they wanted to locate, the parcel A, the 11-acre piece that is being sought by the marketplace and a representative of the owner with a diamond realty and trying to sell the property to benefit the trust as a fiduciary matter for mother is an important element where there is a market for the slightly bigger, the most desirable home site. If you've looked at it and paused out on 181st, is up near a deer stand on the location that is highlighted by the yellow box and shows up in several graphics. It is not towards 181st, and I think if either of you or any of you are looking at potentially building a home there, you would likely suggest to yourself, well, if I was going to build here, I would want to be as close to the northern part as possible. And then you would also want to examine, how much will I spend to accomplish that? As we look at what is desirable, and if you tried to suggest that a road concept is somehow both feasible from a practical point of view for the community, but it needs to be in the context of what else would come with it. We were responding in our narrative and in the sketches that Planner Stockman has put up to really a road layout plan. And as you know, in developing properties that have successfully developed, when somebody chooses to plat rather than administratively split, you have to account for much more than the road layout. You have to account for then, are the lots that would be created by the road layout appropriate to be developed upon? Your septic rules are probably some of the toughest in this area, because you have the greatest amount of separation and therefore the greatest cost per septic system when you are not in the sand. So that creates a burden to the home maker, and all of you know that depending on where you live in the community. But the road has costs, and then when you have a city-street concept that is becoming reality, you have to then pay for the street, its engineering, its ponding requirements. And if any concept is going through the areas in blue, such as the map up there or near them, which may render the ability to do road ponding in another place that's in the tan, you're starting to consume a lot of the property and then you have to just add more dollars to your feasibility sketch. So one of our concerns with the redlined plan that is there for you to evaluate in terms of, is it appropriate to grant this family trust the two lot or the two parcel or the three parcel layout, is there's a lot of blue and a lot of tan, but you're going to chew up more than just the tan that's left over on the sketch by any type of ponding scheme if you think that somehow a frontage road layout is appropriate and financially feasible as well as environmentally sensitive. So there are a few other items within our narrative I wanted to point out. Oftentimes, when you are in this sketch plan phase, as a community, you bless a concept and then either staff or the applicant then marches down to the highway department to make sure that they can accomplish even something as simple as a road location. And in this specific instance, the county had a chance to look, because of the relationship with Bogart-Petersen, at the proposed three parcel layout, at the relative placement in terms of the way 181st works. And because of their feeling that the safety and sightlines were there, they had no issue with drafting a letter that got to the planner and the community so that they were comfortable, given that there are no roads on either side. Streets is merely a concept plan to address the city's comprehensive plan questions. That a shared access between the two new parcels and the remnant parcel still being able to be accessed by field equipment off of 181st was a permissible design. And so I would like to at least point that out. It's in your packet of information tonight that it has been reviewed by them, and they believe that it meets their criteria. So we believe that that's an unusual enough thumbs up from usually a difficult entity that allowing two home sites plus the farming to continue on 181st is, in fact, prudent planning. Not one piece that a lot of this on the board here asks you to consider is the property of the east, 160 acres. Family's been in the community a long time. I don't know them, but if they ever had an inkle that they wanted to break their farm into something smaller, you would probably have heard from them. Our conversations with Planner Stockman indicates that in the 10 years that she's been serving you in this community, nobody has come forward. And anything as significant as what has been sketched there would require a substantial amount of wetland investigation and seriousness that they would accomplish and pull off a plan that made sense for their family's financial objectives in order to then sell that. Planner Stockman is clearly noting that you had this half-mile criteria you were hoping to hit, which is what our plans were responding to. The redline graphics would require you to change that to half, to quarter-mile spacing, something in between a half-mile and quarter-mile. And our drawings that showed a road access point, if in fact it's feasible, and if in fact Green Walt's to the west that was named, that would hit your half-mile spacing and it would potentially allow for some future development opportunity of the larger parcel. I think a key question that we want to ask you, some of you are in farming, some of you in other businesses, you know, the financial feasibility of whatever your business is, whatever your asset is, you need to know that what you're spending to improve your business, you can then recoup within a reasonable effort in that if you're trying to make that a living, you need to earn a little bit on top of that to pay for all the other goods and services you're creating. So it's entirely possible and probable that a slightly larger parcel, that is the remnant, is still a good viable parcel for farming. It's still potentially a more saleable parcel for somebody that wants to do a hobby farm and other activities on there. And I think the serious question we came up with is it makes no financial sense for the Coons property to plat and be pushing roads in a variety of different directions when there have been no imminent applications, in particular to the east. So in the location here, what we proposed is that the best fiduciary responsibility of the property and the family is, as we have suggested and drawn and submitted for the planner to be able to authorize, the 11-acre parcel with the remnant, because the county has given its blessing with their policy to having a driveway that is shared at its access point. So it's... In essence, it's a shared culvert, which then splits so that it can meet the city's ordinance criteria, you're not sharing a driveway, but two driveways merge at one solitary access point to the county road. They bless that as a feasible location. It would be in the trust's best fiduciary plans if you would grant the approval for this. The remnant parcel would then be available for sale as a farm for operation, still benefiting the trust as a rental farm property, and that if anything seemed to be financially feasible to somebody in the future, there's still future development opportunities, similar to what Planner Stockman has put on the board and similar to some of the sketches our engineering consultant has come up with. That's merely a road layout. There's wetland fill options that would have to happen on either of those concepts that were drawn in red or yellow that you are looking at in your packets tonight, because the wetlands that are mapped in the farm country... So you can see on the map here, the graphic to the right on the screen, the biggest wetlands are the DNR map ones, but then there are other farmed wetlands in other shapes that are different in yellow than they are in blue. And so in order for us to show what is feasible on our property, this is what the county's technical advisory panel has come up with along with our consultant. And you can see wetland six, wetland four, wetland five on the western edge, create some pretty narrow windows to try to put a home plan and a road plan together without filling that main east-west wetland. So for any of you that have listened to people dealing with trying to get access or fill wetlands as neighbors or developers or proponents or even to do a driveway through, they're not inexpensive for a couple of reasons. One is those soils are usually thicker and more difficult to excavate and then make proper, and the rules ask us to avoid them, mitigate for them if you have to go through them, and you're only allowed a very small amount of square footage to fill without having to do that. So a city-street concept going east-west is a very challenging exercise once you get to that west of the piece of the remnant parcel where you see the three larger labeling boxes. So in terms of just giving you a picture of how the development rules impact the remnant parcel that is being cropped, we just wanted to introduce you to what's... What would happen in a future plat, should anyone want to come forward to do that? So the Coons Trust is not interested in being a road builder, being a developer. It's just appropriate to allow the 40-acre piece from an estate planning point of view to be broken into more desirable parcels for the community, and that we have put in front of you are the 11-acre, the five-acre, and the remnant parcel as of this calendar year. Any delays to the approval processes for further evaluation, we believe, wouldn't yield much greater successes. And for the person that is hoping to buy the property on the east, build a home in your community on that 11-acre parcel, it pushes their construction further towards winter, more precarious construction cost periods, or delayed all the way until next year. So they've been patient with the process so far, and you can ask Realtor Greg Roglan what his experiences are in holding that customer together for this process. There's several other notes that have been in the various reports, some of which we wanted to just highlight if you had any questions for us, but I just wanted to be able to get you an outline of some of our perspectives that are in your package for you tonight, and be happy to respond to questions, and I would like to respond to questions if you have any. The park fees question that the planner brought up, we just wanted to note that we're more than willing to pay for any parcel with park fees, or at least propose that ownership should follow through with that. I can't make a financial commitment. I can take what you advise, what the staff revise, take it to the ownership, and they're the ones that would make the decision for the trust to move forward. But if you're going to be able to achieve a building permit on parcel A, parcel B, but not parcel C, then it wouldn't make sense to pay a park fee whenever a building permit would become eligible on that agricultural piece, then a park fee would be collectible. That was one clarification. The other would be, should you propose for staff to move forward with the three lot or the... Excuse me, the three parcel or the two parcel design, wetland buffers would be created for the parcels that are buildable. I understand that some of you would at least have familiarity with farming practices on a property that's already cropped and has its mapping for various crop issues. The wetland buffers wouldn't be added to the remnant parcel at such time as it became a platted property, and therefore that farmer, that leased farm property would still be able to match what is currently in guidance at the conservation offices where they're turning in their total acreage. It's a little bit out of my wheelhouse, but that's, you know, it's important to the farmer to be able to still crop what's theirs. They don't go into the blue areas, but some of those farmed wetland pieces that are in the middle of the site, they're now mapped for development purposes, but they're still entitled to go and crop into those locations as they have historically. So if any of you are farming, have farmed, or know one, I'll defer to your expertise on that. Thank you for listening. If you wanted to hear anything about the real estate marketplace and specifically about the parcel to the east, parcel A, from Mr. Roglan, we'd certainly like you to be able to listen to him. He's here tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Going back to our planner here, we have to look at the future, what's going to happen with this 40 acres, right?
Correct.
Correct.
We have to look at what the layout's going to be if later, if somebody does develop it further.
Correct.
So that's important to us, that we have a plan in place, if this is sold, so coordinates with the other properties alongside what their plans would be. And that's basically why she put that, put those plans in there.
So if you, you know, as, if it's two-lot option here, you would at least be able to bud up a street to parcel A for future subdivision, but if you allow parcel B to go in here also, that is what really messes up any future street east-west, if that's your goal. I mean, which, my recommendation is that should be your goal based on your ordinance. You know, if we give him parcel 11, it's, you know, parcel A at 11 acres, it is subdivisible, but I would also add a condition that says there will be no flag lot splits or any variances given, because this is what we see happen when we leave a parcel like this and the land eventually subdivides around it. It's big enough to split, but if we don't eventually serve it with a local street, then we get a special request coming back to us and when it could have been prevented to begin with. So that's my only concern with, you know, what's been proposed. I'm more comfortable with the two-lot split than the three-lot split, because there is still potential here of getting a parcel that does back up to 181st. So that's that comment. Realtor Greg, what is your last name for the record, just so we can spell it correctly?
It's Roglan, R-O-E-G-I-N.
Okay, Rogan.
Greg with three Gs.
Okay. Nice to meet you. So you obviously have a buyer for this parcel. Yeah, they've got the required amount of lot width there, so we need to just discuss whether you'd like to see this one lot, two lots, new lots, and then from a park dedication standpoint, really they should parcel B or C, whichever, you know, the agricultural parcel we'll call it, even though it will continue to be farmed, it would still be considered legal out of record and a buildable parcel. So I think we either have to just have you, well, I think there were some soil borings done on it.
Correct. There were, in the packet that you had, you had six preliminary soil borings taken so that it was confirmed that at least six highest, the six highest locations on that 40 acres had the potential to be able to be, become home sites. Didn't mean six home sites were going to be made. It made sense to explore six locations, and each of them had one and a half to close to two feet of your cover. Your rules require three feet of separation, so that 18 to 20 inches of separation, which is another consideration in order to get that roughly half-acre of additional cover with the three feet. That's a cost a home builder or a home buyer, the lot owner, needs to add to their construction cost in order to make that mound system work in the location that they choose. So the septic investigator wanted us to at least remind the staff and the community that in several instances, the way the road layout is drawn here for your consideration and thinking, is that those are going through some of the best home site spaces, because they are also the highest parts of the property. So kind of good for road building, not so good for home building. So important things to look at when we're just looking at a map in two dimensions, part of the overlay that we have to do is where would somebody actually want to build a home, and then is there a septic system available? So the home maker has to add costs for both structured driveway and for that septic system, and it's more expensive than the clay sites here, so. Thank you.
I have a question. The county's going to only allow you one access to that 40?
What they are allowing is that two home sites, so 20 trips, using one shared culvert for the access for these two home sites that were proposed at, so if you call it the three-parcel concept, that that's where they would want the access to the county road for those two driveways. Not a street, but the two driveways for those two parcels. A street access would still need to go through a whole separate conversation with the counties to where they would want that.
Right here is where the proposed shared driveway was.
Yeah. Their language is a little bit diff, I'm sorry, Liz.
No, and then you had an agricultural.
Right, and then where the Realtors, where Greg Stein is, and where the county was going to allow. So they have two places that they've created slightly wider pavement to enter this property. So they've often, and if you drive that road, you kind of see these little bump outs, it is on our survey if you blow it up on your machines at home, but, so the county clearly anticipated when they repaved it most recently that there's at least field access, and both of those are 50 feet wide in terms of that little taper and that little extra space. So whether it's a driveway culvert or whether it becomes a street at some point in time, they contemplated these things when they put that road layout together and paving plan. What they've issued is that they're okay with, for two homes with that five-acre piece and the 11-acre piece, that they would have their two distinct driveways coming together for that shared access point. They call it a shared driveway, your ordinance kind of calls it something a little bit different, but in principle, that's the same idea, so.
The question I have, if somebody comes in and buys that 20 and they want to develop that, is the county going to allow them to have more than one access?
My understanding is that then a street access would have to be dealt with, and more than likely who buys the 20 is, unless they're going to do one home site using that field access, that then there's a whole different set of conversations similar to a plat.
Is any commissioners got a?
Good question, though. Thank you, Mr. Enns.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Hopala.
I thought of that, too. I think it makes the lot C, parcel C undevelopable until the one to the west gets developed. If we allow this concept plan that they proposed.
They could also, Mr. Chair, pardon me.
Yes, Planner.
Commissioner Hopala, they could also start on the Greenwald property and come, you know, inland that side, but you're right, I mean, they would have to go across parcel A from the west to even get to parcel C, or there would be a new street coming up to serve parcel C directly from 181st. I mean, typically what happens is, you know, like Mr. Jensen stated, it never, even though we try as hard as we might to concept plan, we get very close, but sometimes whomever subdivides first is the one that has the beginning of that street constructed. So there could be, yeah, several options that could happen.
Mr. Chair.
Who's speaking?
Right here from the podium, Mr. Chair, Mr. Jensen, Commissioner Hopala. Of the sketches that we put in the packet that were ours that came from the Bogart-Petersen Engineering Firm, what we were responding to was the city comp plan request that half-mile spacing be the criteria for city streets to hit 181st, streets not driveways. And so if you honor the 181st street spacing criteria of the half-mile, the next street starting point and its eligibility would have to become the Greenwald property. So you would be needing to issue a different guidance to staff that you could go at less than a half-mile in order to enter into that remnant parcel with a street. So that was what, the reason our sketch that we submitted for long-range planning purposes indicated that a street would need to come from the Greenwald side, because that was the only way you could get to a half-mile spacing distance from Xenolith, which is the one that's the most defined, that's already a three-legged road on that property, the Paulson Farm to the east of both of these. So I think to answer Commissioner Hopala's question, your spacing criteria renders the parcel, remnant parcel, C undevelopable until you give applicants guidance that they could go to less than a half a mile, similar to the red line sketches. So, and the planners pointed that out, the city would need to change that space. We didn't have the flexibility to ask for that without going into a plat processes, which is not what the trust was seeing as feasible out here for this property. I hope that answers your question.
What's the width on the lot A there? What's the width down by the road down there?
300 feet, Mr. Chair, in both cases. So the, we had hoped that by having greater than 300 feet at the home site, which is where the bigger letters are for the parcel A, and the knob, if you read topography maps to the, to the upper part of the sheet.
Up here.
But staff asked us to, in order to gain approval at the administrative or any other level, that they wanted to see us hold 300 feet all the way up to 181st. It's 300 feet, 300 feet, and then the remnant distance.
Planner Stockman, if they ever want to split A because it's a big lot, they would never be able to do it then?
Yeah, you could if a street were either.
If there was, there'd have to be a street. Without a street, they couldn't do it, right?
Right. What I'm saying is we should attach the conditions, if we allow parcel A to split, that it may not be split via flag lot, but instead a street would have to come in across from east or west, whether it be a through street or a cul-de-sac to serve the parcel. And, yeah, what I was saying is parcel B just really gets in the way of anything because it's not subdivisible again. There's no problem with parcel C, we know that's got potential. But, yeah, when they started the process, they had 150 feet of front edge, which is typically allowed, except that you have to have 300 feet at the building setback line. So if you have a rectangular parcel, it doesn't work as well. But that was typically to allow a little flexibility on curves, so then they complied and made this, the lots 300 wide.
Mrs. Stockman?
Yes.
Commissioner Perle.
Can we go back to the Greenwald? I have a question. The property to the west of what we're discussing right now, I don't recall, we just split it into three lots, correct? So it's not an actual concept of more than the three, although we are showing, you are showing on one of the parcels, three separate. So it's those, that section that you're showing right there is only one parcel, correct?
Correct. In the current situation, they also, yeah, left a remnant to be farmed, that's right. And I'm guessing it's probably the same farmer for the two fields. Right.
And on that, on that exhibit, the white line at the bottom perpendicular to 64 is the half a mile marker from Rabbit Street, and then the other one to the right of that is the half a mile marker from Xenolith, correct? So between those two, we're really only allowed one access point, because there has to be a half a mile from each other.
Well, right, and that can, that is variable based on not only city engineer but county engineer suggestions. I mean, they look at sight lines, I mean, they have to at times vary from the half-mile. We like to see a half-mile, but I think the city engineer would probably tell you that a little less spacing with a local street is safer than six or eight homes that are affronting on 181st. So I, you know, I'm not gonna, that was not a direct quote or anything, but just knowing the general thinking typically, but, yeah, so it's going to be either a little longer or a little shorter than a half-mile.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Don Jensen speaking. In my narrative, I was giving you some rough parameters also for street costs. So when you're looking at all the yellow dots that would represent sketch plan options for homes, if I could ask you just to keep in mind and do some mental math for yourselves, you know, you've got 800, 900 feet of roads, because these are five-acre lots, they're not much smaller parcels, so each one of those home sites is bearing a portion of that cost. At 1,000 feet, we're talking about, you know, $150,000 of street cost expenses that are going in, and if you're, in essence, you're subtracting one lot in terms of a one-to-one relationship. If a lot can sell for $150,000, you're building a $150,000 street, you really only have two other homes to try to create some way to analyze whether there's yield there. So it's a slightly different way. Sketch plan merely allows us to show where home sites go for the next steps in analyzing whether building a cul-de-sac becomes smart, building a street through a street becomes wise. One of the key pieces that we did want you to at least mull over as you debate is while the red graphic plan and one big long roadway kind of looks interesting on a land plan, it is more street to maintain for the community, and while some folks believe that cul-de-sacs are harder to maintain, they're clearly navigable and they're clearly desirable, and in some cases environmentally, they're the absolute smartest way to end a street by giving approval to this property for those two parcels, you're going to have less road to maintain in the future. So those are, we believe, certainly some benefits to the community at large as well, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mayor.
So I have a question. If you look at the option two, showing the street plan, and our requirements would be 150 feet?
150 feet with 300-foot lot width at the building setback.
So with the idea that to make this compromise, is there a potential to narrow up lot A at the street? Shorten up lot B so it doesn't go all the way back to that corner? Still get your lot width back where your building site is, but then you can leave some farmland between the south corner of lot A and the north corner of lot B, it becomes instead of a rectangular, a little more square, but you leave enough easement there for a potential new road someday in the future. Lot A is divisible, lot B would need. Lot A is divisible, Lot B would need to be, and it still needs, planners need to play a road in the future. Is that a reasonable compromise?
Did you follow that?
I did, and I was already thinking the same thing, Commissioner.
Could you explain it again, Mr. Mayor?
So let me, let me do it up here. So right now, Lot A is three hundred feet, we need a minimum of a hundred and fifty to the three hundred foot of the site. So we narrow this up, bring this down a little bit, incorporate that one lands into Lot A. B comes up, and instead of coming all the way up to here, we leave enough easement here for a road. And B, instead of coming up this length, comes up here and goes over a little wider this way. You can still share a drive access. It gives you B, it gives a planner a future road if necessary, and this is a divisible lot. So instead of these two joining here, you leave your gap here for potential road in the future.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Commissioner Pearl.
I was actually on the same line of thinking because with the half a mile distance from intersections, it puts a really nice location for subdivision road if they get to that point before their neighbors do, almost in the dead center of this, this parcel. And where it's shown on that option two, I would say the, the street would be on the opposing side of to be parcel B then, because it is the best location on the road and in the, in the field itself. Yes, it's high and dry, and that's where we have to run the roads because otherwise you have a lot more cost involved with wetland issues. But then, like Mayor was saying, getting an option even to divide an eleven-acre parcel and even accessing what is a twenty-plus acre parcel and have it divisible in the future if needed, I was on the same line of thinking.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Couple comments. It's, yeah, it's good thinking, I like compromised thinking. I'm guessing they're not gonna like a road between the building site and the wetland. The other thing is that you'll have a road on the north side, the south side, and the west side of parcel B if you bring the street in here. So, well, no, if you're, well, yeah, there would be a road on both north and south sides, even if they temporarily share this driveway. It's, yeah, it's challenging. My thinking, it, it's, let's see here, well, this was sort of a, I guess that was similar to what was in the graphic, but this was using the concept that we've used a couple of times with dedicating the right-of-way, and then this owner is still allowed to, would own this whole piece, there'd be an easement across it that he would be allowed to cross with his driveway, but we would have that, you know, this could go through however many lots, I guess. But in using our deferred paving mechanism in our ordinance, but anyway, it's, it is a challenge.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mayor.
So again, that, that concept is fine, you still dedicate an easement for if there ever is a future road. It's not gonna come down on, on the west of parcel B. Parcel B, as you, as you sketched out here in options A and, and one and two, that's still on the north side of parcel B if, if there's a parcel in there.
Yeah.
And so it just moves it up a little bit, you know, it's not in the wetlands, but it, it changes the configuration on A a little bit, B a little bit, and there's an easement there for if there is a road that comes through and that future development on that twenty-four acres comes through, that there's something you can access, and if not, it's still gonna be farmed, it's still gonna be part of parcel A to be utilized. It just means a little bit of reconfiguration on your part if that is a doable solution that meets planner's needs and potentially state's needs.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Planning Commissioner Ames, Planning Chair, Don Jensen speaking for those at home. So if I'm hearing the comments correctly, if we were to utilize the hundred and fifty-foot width and provide a road easement solution similar to some of the red graphics, then...
Excuse me, it could be as, as little as a hundred and fifty, but any portion of that.
Correct, correct. Which, and, and for those that didn't look closely at the county's memo, the original sketch that they looked at and authorized, that joint shared culvert access point was for a lot that could have been a hundred and fifty feet, so it's consistent with what the mayor's dimension is. If you would be able to allow staff to proceed with admin lots for the hundred and fifty, and then there's a condition to grant some type of a road easement across that, I just wanna be sure to relate to ownership of the trust, this is what is being proposed tonight so that if that agreement came forward and that the council has to ratify it at their next meeting on the fourteenth, I just wanted to be sure I was representing things correctly since there wouldn't be minutes on the record yet. Is that, am I hearing that somewhat correctly to what?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Pearl.
I did review the county notes, and the things that I have to say is that, yes, the road is going to continue to get more busy. I agree with the county. The shared access driveway, not a shared driveway per se, but a shared access point is what they're explaining. I do agree that that is probably at this point the best option if we do three lot split, because the county does, they, they say that that's fine, and they're, they're gonna grace that. For future splits, it would obviously have to change. I don't know that the hundred and fifty foot on parcel A would then be that desirable for a lot split in the future, so that's something to consider. And then there is already access points to the farm field, so that's none of our concern there. That's just a future thing to, a future split again. And as far as the, the width of the driveways, the approach is off the road, that was just done because they were there. I don't think that the, I would have to think that the people doing the work at the time did not know that it was a driveway or approved driveway or not. So they're there just because there was an approach there and they didn't wanna ruin the, the asphalt edge. So once they're approved and an actual driveway is put in, those aprons will then also meet up with the said driveway. I agree that the flag lot would not be allowable at this, if it ever had to be, parcel A ever had to be split, because there is plenty enough room, land, to put in an access point other than giving it a flag lot. Yes, we do have a lot of wetlands to diverge around, but there are a lot more, you know, higher locations to look at and try to work around those for a future split. I would encourage those, the people to, I mean, I think it would be great to do a three lot split, I'm for it, a three lot split, I'm for it, with the shared driveway as the county says, and maybe just reconfiguring the shape of lots to allow for a future expansion if ever needed. No, I don't think we have to grant easement space because that can get kinda messy when we don't know it's coming.
Well, you're never gonna get it if you don't take it now.
Yes, I know that, but there's plenty of land outside of all that.
Well, if the, yeah, if the lot, if the remnant parcel is still connected to C, right, and then there's a strip in there which might be doable, then that would be acceptable. Like a, a kind of an east-west little wing that butts up to parcel A or something like that. But, yeah, we do need three hundred feet of lot width though with parcel A, or else the southern part won't be a legal lot when it's split.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mayor.
And again, as we look at the lot lines that are proposed on the northern part of that, those aren't parallel lines. So again, parcel A, if you were to take a look at potential splitting in the future, you just have your minimum, make sure you hit your minimum on the highway, and then pie that out so that at the building location, you've got your three hundred feet.
Well, except that when they're wanting to put the house so far back, if you're only a hundred and twenty feet back, some, you know, it's sometimes hard to get, get to that three hundred.
Yeah, but I mean, that's...
That's, that's their, yeah.
Their job.
They can look at that, sure.
I mean, it, it gives them an option. If you, if you're gonna have a buildable lot, it's gotta be the five acres with the three hundred foot of the, of the house setback.
Right.
With the house. But it's, it's doable, meeting our minimums at the setback and at the street access. And, and again, easement isn't our desire at this point. Leaving that strip between parcel A and parcel B as least wide enough for a street should parcel C ever develop.
Okay.
It gives, it gives possibility, if the Paulsons should choose at some point to develop, there's, there's a possibility of splitting A, connecting to a road into parcel C. Mr. Jensen, does that make sense?
Yes, go ahead. Chair Ames, Mayor Pyle. I believe I'm understanding what you're saying. I think what we'll wanna do is talk to the trust tomorrow and the next day as we connect. For clarification purposes, my understanding of the ordinance rules were that a land ownership entity could use the administrative split process once in every twelve months. In this specific case, we are talking about something, I don't wanna say a hybrid, but slightly different for the ownership to consider on this parcel B piece. So if there was a slightly different shape or configuration, they could easily make the decision on A. There is the desirability on the part of the market for the eleven-acre parcel. I don't know that that specific buyer is that keen on having re-subdividable land, but it's available if they so choose. And then it's a little, we would just need to talk through the options if parcel B was available. Where would then a road easement show up in red to accomplish what this group's, the city's objectives are? If a condition could be created that, if the trust can solve that, but maybe not next week, would a second admin split be feasible with the roads and an easement figured out? Whether council would have that discretion? I'm, I'm not sure I read that anywhere in the ordinance, that was just a question that we wanted to ask. What was understandable was that to move forward if the trust was at the head of the organizational chart for a parcel, remnant parcel, if they wanted to act as a developer, which they don't, but if they did, then a plat would be necessary in order to pull off all of that. I'm not sure if my question is clear, but it's, there's discretion usually in the ordinance that the council can change the rules if it makes sense for the community, so.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Mr. Chair, so Liz, if, if the concept is agreed upon by the commission tonight and the trust agrees that they can reconfigure that, the council could pass that with the, as long as it wasn't significantly different than what the commission agrees upon tonight?
Yeah, but he, are you talking just with parcel A and B or parcel A, B, and C? Because you can only split once by the same owner by meets and bounds, so any further splits would have to be platted.
Yeah.
On C?
Well, yeah, yes, if he can figure out A, B, and C, yes, we can do a three lot split, approved by council, and you can get a revised drawing by soon, you know, we're only...
And I think that's why I was asking the question. We've already placed on the record that we would take the two parcel configuration. What you're giving us has something to digest is can we make that three parcel design work with some type of a road easement? We don't wanna miss the September fourteenth for the two parcel goal so that a buyer could then at least attempt to get something in the ground before it frees up. Maybe we can, maybe we can't, but if we're still allowed to upon a good resolution of parcel B, still be able to call that our original three lot eligibility, three parcel eligibility. It might be the engineers take more than a week and a half to give us a good sense for that, and we'd hope not to miss, the council needs to authorize something, what we're going for. That may be just our issue to resolve, but if there's a chance to hear that tonight, we, we have a group of, of good commissioners and a, and a mayor here in attendance, so thank you.
Well, let's see what we can do. We could certainly, I guess...
And I don't, I'm just, I just wanted to get these comments, Mr. Chair, on the record. I don't always expect an answer that's binding by having an applicant propose and raise a question. Staff can get back to us, certainly caucus with the necessary folks. We just wanted to put the question on the record that we know the admin lot process doesn't get you more than three, but if the three is still available, maybe the decision on the second is deferred to within, within two months, within three months, within what period? There's no person banging down the door for the second parcel for building right now? Just the, the main one on the east side?
Well, but then you've got, I mean, you're talking, are you talking then one set of findings or what? I mean, because if you have to come back again, and then you have a second record, recordable, you know, some documents and such, it's really setting precedent, so I don't know.
Well, we don't desire it to be tabled. We would like to move forward at least with the two parcel. It's really helpful to have the conversation tonight and all of the good inputs so that allows ownership, the Realtor team, real estate team, and, and myself, and now we can talk to the engineers and the surveyors about what's, what makes sense.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, first, and then Sam, go ahead, Mayor, first.
So in that, if you're going, if you wish to proceed, you've got a potential buyer for parcel A.
Yes, sir.
For the two lot split, it may still behoove you to reconfigure A, so at some point later you wanna come up with B, it's gonna be a separate operation. But knowing that the city would like access for road in there at some point, B can be configured in later, once you get to C, it's gonna be platted out no matter what.
Right.
So at least if you wanna get going with A, something to consider is what would B look like and configure A accordingly, and then with the commission's recommendation and the council would, would address it on the fourteenth.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Schiller, do you want?
That's pretty much what I was gonna say also, that you just have to like shorten B down a little bit and make it a little bit wider and stuff like that. I think it'd be smart to have that part all approved today because then you got it all done, you don't have to come back here.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So I will need to prepare findings with your favorable recommendation based on the three lots total with the adjustments for future street on the north side of parcel B, of butting with the ability to butt up to parcel A for future split of parcel A. And then you, let's see here, there'll be, you know, there'll be quite a few conditions regarding their, they still need the wetland delineation reviewed and approved by the city's wetland specialist. They need to do, prepare the minram, which is, defines the buffer widths. It defines the types of wetlands that are there, which in turn defines the buffer widths between fifteen and twenty-five feet adjacent to the wetlands. So what... buffer widths between 15 and 25 feet adjacent to the wetlands. So what Mr. Jensen was asking to begin with was, can we just apply those buffer widths to parcel A and B and not parcel C? How are we gonna handle parcel C? He's gotta show lot buildability for parcels A and B. Technically, I think he should be required to show buildability for C because it is saleable. Somebody could buy the whole piece and wanna build on it. I don't know. I'm thinking if, and if he paid the park dedication for parcel C and ends up subdividing it, he can certainly have a credit for that one lot already paid. Unless you have other thinking, um, and then he has to show septic sites, primary and backup for parcels A and B. Um, he's gotta show building pad, lowest floor elevation, so we'll need some engineering work done regarding flood elevation. And then, um, parcel B, I don't think contains any soil borings. Is that right?
No, it did, it did.
Do they have, how many? One or two? One on that high spot?
I believe two.
Okay, that's my error then. Um-
There were six sites throughout. They all had PERC capability and it was just noted how, you know, at the six sites that were done for the preliminary test, one would merely add. So I guess really the question is, when you're doing a hybrid mound system, it's feasible, you just know what the amount is that you're gonna add on top of the depth to milled soil if you're staying at that same location.
Right. So, um, and is your buyer aware that for parcel A, because the home is setback so hard, he's gotta have a minimum 12-foot wide driveway and some turnaround capabilities for large-
That's our understanding, that they've done some of their homework on that too, yeah.
Okay, very good. Just wanna make sure, no surprises. Um, so what would the commission like to recommend for park dedication and lot buildability?
Getting back to your original there, that, did that includes that easement across the 11 acre?
Um, I don't think we're gonna go that far. We're going to leave a space across the north part of B so that they can officially access A in the future. That was my understanding. That we were not gonna ask for public road easement at this time. But they will have the ability to get a road through to A and be able to accomplish an east-west connection eventually. Um, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Pearl?
Um, I do favor having all three sites show buildability, just because even if it's farmland and they're splitting it, right now they're currently, is at least one spot as a whole. So by splitting it, I believe we should at least, it should show buildability on all three, just for the safeness of making sure it's fine.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner?
Yeah. I was just thinking the same thing as Commissioner Pearl. They should have three buildable sites if they're gonna split. At least prove one buildable on C. And also, would it be prudent to request the easement on A if the road would need to go through there in the future? If they're gonna allow the space on the north side of B, should we also continue that through A?
Uh, to piggyback with what your question is.
Commissioner Pearl?
To piggyback with your question, that's what the whole point of the space between the, the, the piece, the further back piece of A and then B being configured shorter and not touching A and having a space there, that would be the allowable easement. So I don't think as a commission, we should encourage an easement through the property because there's no desire for that. There's no buildable sites being requested on the other side of that property. It was just the requirement to get an easement to it if we had to subdivide and they wanted to split parcel A. So at this point, I don't believe we're, we need to ask for an easement through parcel A. Unless they wanted to split it and access the other side of, the east side of them.
Mr. Chair?
At that time.
Yes, Commissioner Bass?
So basically what would happen is if we had that access to A from C, in order to develop C, they would have to get an agreement from the current owner of the time of A to get across-
No.
Their property, no? So you're saying bringing the road-
They, well, if they're gonna develop C-
Right.
They don't have to go on the twoing here at all.
Okay, I thought we were talking about an easement across here.
Only if they wanna divide this into two parcels.
Right, right.
Is that gonna be an issue?
So they would, any development on parcel C would have to come in off of kind of Route 64?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Or, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mayor.
Uh, or through the Greenwald property adjacent.
But again, they would have to have approval from the owner of parcel A at that time to, oh, no, Greenwald, to the, to the west, to the west, yeah. Okay, thank you.
You're right, yeah.
Yep, gotcha.
Yeah, exactly. I know you were on the right, you knew what I meant, or you-
Yeah.
I know what you meant.
Yep, okay.
Okay. Yes, so what, what has happened or what can happen is if you dedicate right away, but you don't build the road, then what has to happen is there's an agreement which allows the owner to use that easement in the interim before the city builds and accepts the road. Uh, well, the city doesn't build the road, but they accept it as a built, um, entity. We have had agreements, you know, which in turn allow the owner to use that. But if, again, it's a small, it's one lot, it's a small, uh, crossing, but, you know, you can go either way on it. It's just an extra step involving attorneys.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Am I understanding your question, Stockman, about, or what you're saying? Are you saying that we are going to actually set up an easement next to-
I'm saying you could.
Oh.
No.
Okay, you're, you're saying a possibility.
The way I understand it, we are going to just abut, allow room to go through parcel A and across, you know, the north side of B. And then, yeah. I just wanted them to just generally educate as to what we, some things we've done in the past. Okay, so-
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mayor.
Mayor Stockman, yeah, here. If the Paulson property to the east ever were to develop and somebody bought C and wanted to plat that out, how do you get across A?
Yeah, then you're stuck. Because you can't-
With an easement, you at least have it. They have told use of it until either side of them develop and they wanted to split the lots.
Right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Uh, Don Jensen speaking from the podium here. Mr. Pyle, the question is posed, what would happen to the east? And really, the only issue that I would see as a planner of many different properties in my career is, the most probable scenario here is we've got somebody living on parcel A. There is, the question as to what would be happening with the remainder of the trust's property, parcels B and C, if we figure out this easement abut question. There would be a road access already on and into this area that works either through the Greenwald property or through the trust property. That's what you're contemplating. And then, there isn't a prohibition on the part of the Paulson property to develop because of what's going on over here. You would just have to decide if you're okay with a two cul-de-sac plan or a one cul-de-sac concept plan that's still gonna have a connection to the highway, which was, 'cause the red graphic here takes a new road off of 181st to serve the remnant parcel or not. So developmentally, the, the Paulson property, I would suggest to you is gonna have to use xylate or xylite and likely go north to your other city street. The cul-de-sac portion, the portion coming east-west really close to this, would have to be a very aggressive developer or at least phases two or three. So it would still be many, many years before it came here. You'd, you'd resolve the connection at the preliminary plat process, but it isn't gonna touch down for quite some time. And with nobody really in the wings, it's probably at least five years out, so, not that that's a tremendous concern. I think it's a feasible plan for the community, even if it ended in a cul-de-sac. I guess is really what I'm trying to say, similar to what we've drawn here. I don't think it's a harm to the community. I don't think it's a harm to the Paulson property. And the only thing you're giving up is a conceptual through-street that's more beneficial than not having more street. I guess that's how we saw it. We'd love to have your approval for that one lot concept tonight for A, and then we'll, uh, need to talk over ownership about how to deal with the easements if we wanted to go to the three parcel and be able to communicate quickly back.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner-
I, I'm against an easement going across A, just because unless they would ever go to like split that piece of property or something like that, I wouldn't wanna own a piece of property and all of a sudden someday, you're doing nothing with it and all of a sudden there's a road across the middle of your property. I guess I would be, I'd be against an easement going across that, that A, unless they would develop.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I agree with what, um, Commissioner Schiller said, but since the owner's gonna be, know, know that easement exists when he buys it, it's not as big of a hardship. So-
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Pearl?
There's a potential buyer coming in asking for a 11 acre. They doubt they want a five acre parcel, otherwise they'd be asking for a five acre parcel. Just throwing this out there because I know what it's like to have acreage and I understand the whole easement process, but this is a 40 acre parcel that has accessibility options from 64. We can make it happen if they wanted to have just one parcel right now split. And I'm all for not having an easement through their property, 'cause that probably would send them away.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Just know that the street east-west then may never happen. That's an option. Yeah. I understand, well, things change and I'm certain to, I agree, that the buyer of parcel A wants a large piece and has no interest in splitting it now. He or she gets old, decides they're moving and they wanna sell another lot. You know, I mean, things change. Whether or not it happens, nobody knows. But, yeah, that's fine. If you don't want an easement, we'll go that route. And, but are we not including a recommendation for B just to move it along altogether as a three lot split, correct? And then he, he can choose at council level if he, those three lots, or council can vote how they wish on the final decision.
I have one-
Yes, Commissioner Pearl?
Just to clarify for them, as the applicants and the people, you know, representing them, they come through this process, they've already paid their fee.
Right.
They only do the two lots. In order to come back, they have to pay that whole fee all over again, go through this process, or they can't at all.
They have to plat it. That's what I'm saying is, so-
Okay.
You-
Which would be a-
If we recommend that there's some semblance of parcel B that they're going to revise, council can review and approve it or not, that at least gives them an option.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair?
I would just like to agree with that, that we, we propose, um, I like the idea of the three acre-
Three parcels?
The three parcel, um, sorry, um, arrangement that has, we've kinda proposed it. And it's my understanding that the, the resizing of B is to just, for future potential of a road to go all the way across, just so we have the option, or the, you know, commissioners in the future have the option to, uh, to plat that out. But not necessarily a requirement for that. We're just trying to give as many options as possible. Is that correct? So I, I, I like the idea of having the three, the three plots, just resizing B to accommodate that future.
For the record, Commissioner Carlson just made that comment. Okay, Commissioner Pearl?
The only reason we're suggesting or recommending a change to the side is to get the rear, the north property line for parcel B out of the wetland, so it doesn't eat up their acreage if we ever needed to do a cul-de-sac over to parcel B, if, ever. That was the only, I think, logical reasoning for this, is so that it was not going through wetlands, 'cause it would just be too expensive and probably not possible for the future.
Do you think we've got everything pretty well covered there?
So, lot buildability and park dedication fees for all three lots. That way they're open to sell parcel C if they choose to do so or build upon it, or continue to farm whatever they choose. Um, yes, so one of the conditions, no flag lot for parcel A, revise and resubmit survey with all the required information. Any future subdivisions shall be platted. Um, I think that covers it. Oh, oh, what about buffers on, well, you said, that's right. Parcel C will have buffers too then? Um, I, we should check on that, Mr. Jensen, about what the, wasn't there just a new law for, the farmers had to stay so many feet away from a wetland? Not the little ones, but the big one, the DNR protective ones?
Mostly.
I thought it was 20 feet. Is it that much? You know, Kelly?
About, I think it's 15, 20?
15, yeah.
15?
Mostly with traveling water, so to speak.
Under drains, digits.
Drain digits.
Yep.
Oh, 16 and a half feet of a ditch.
I just, yes, I, I just read a deal on that that was in the farming magazine today.
It's part of a pesticide, like, from first off, 15 feet?
I see. Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Do you have another thought on that?
Um, yeah, Mr. Chair, Don Jensen responding to Planner Stockman's question. I, I think we would recheck it. I think the issue is what is the distance between DNR or state-numbered wetlands versus oftentimes cropped, farmed wetlands?
Agreed.
And I think that's the distinction that we would be looking to have for parcel C. Uh, in the notes that I was just hearing, parcel A staying at 300 feet wide then has the opportunity granted to the parcel buyer that they could re-subdivide such that some easement touches the portion that would be re-subdivided. Now, that could happen from the west, or it could happen from the east, doesn't, um, mean that it wouldn't happen. You'd be asking for this touch point to happen at least somewhere on its western line. So that is a saleable point to the property buyer that, if 30 years from now they wanted something or whenever, that, that could happen. Um, the, the percolation test and proving that, we would probably just get our septic person to just note and put on their letterhead that by adding 1.5 feet in that specific boring location of fill, that it was then percalable.
Mr. Chair? Oh, just to respond, I can show you some examples of-
Sure.
-how buildability has been shown on surveys.
Sure, that'd be great.
No, I think you could, it'll, it'll be easy.
We'll be able to solve that obligation.
Yep.
And then, and then we'll, we'll check on whether the, with the wetland question that was up hand with our wetland consultant, Chella.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Pearl?
I believe the only thing that is on the list of questions that wasn't-
I believe the only thing that is on the list of questions that wasn't answered was the park and fee dedication, and from the past of what we've done for other applicants, I believe, from my memory, we have only charged for the additional lots, so, no?
Only if there's an existing home on it.
True, okay, yes, there is no existing home, okay, sorry.
That's why I wrote that.
Got it, understandable.
But, you're right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mayor.
The question on the park fee, Planner Stockman, if parcel C, I can understand, trying to make sure there's a buildable lot on it, but if they're not building it, it's going to continue as farmland, wouldn't it make sense to assess the park fees when somebody actually builds there? Otherwise, you've got this park fee hanging out over 24 acres that may be subdivided, you know, four times.
Well, I guess that's your option, you do have that discretion under the minor subdivision rules to, you know, deviate from that. So, it does reference that new lots means the total number of lots, since we have a new description for each parcel. You know, we did redefine our ordinance a couple of years back to say that the total number of lots shall be subject to the application of dedication fees. Now, I understand what you're saying, though, if there's no way to recoup that when you're not selling a lot, but, so that would be, I guess, up to the council if you do want to waiver from that, or if the commission wants to, yeah. It, I don't know, I, again, don't like to set precedent, but if you're not selling the lots right away, hard, hard to know. But if you're doing, you know, if you're making buildability but then not a park dedication, it's sort of, I think, either all or nothing maybe for that parcel C.
I, I agree with you, I, I think we should take the dedication now, and if they want to sell it, or if they want to do some further development later on, it'd be fine, but take it now, and it's all ready to go, if they sell that lot, it can be built on.
Then they can get a credit for that lot later.
Yeah, they could get credit later if they're going to split that tonny up.
Yeah, that'll pay, help pay for their engineering fees.
The commission agrees with that?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner.
I agree with that, your assessment there.
Okay, so three lots, you're good, is that, is that the consensus?
Should be tied to the building permit. Should be tied to the building permit. That's where it belongs, all those fees coming to the, otherwise, it gets a false sense of loss, because you'll have this 24 acres out there, and you're still going to have to revisit it, since you put four houses, you're going to want more money again, and maybe it'll only be one house in that 24 acres, you don't know that.
Chair.
Commissioner Farrell?
I haven't paid on my lot, and it's just farmland, too.
Yeah, but it's, but you only paid on one house.
No, I paid on two lots.
Then you split the lot, probably you got it for the finance, because that's the way that works.
Okay, what is...
Most of agree that they split the lot right away.
All right, we'll include that as a condition, and the council can decide what to do. Okay, thank you very much for all the conversations.
Do we have to make, do we have to make this a motion, then?
Yes, formal motion.
Does somebody like to make a motion with Liz's recommendation she just made? And, and you're going to, you're going to take and, get a diagram of where the lots are going to look to present to the council, then?
Correct, revised survey and everything, right, with all the conditions that I outlined.
Jiminy, is that a quick question for Liz?
Oh, uh-huh.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the wetland delineation still needs to be done, right?
No, they did that, they did the delineation, but the...
But not approved? I wrote down conditions, wetland delineation approved?
Right, it has to be approved by the city's wetland specialist, I don't know if they went on site, had their TEP meeting and everything.
My, my understanding, and in our updated memo that's in your packet, both, both did occur, and that's so that technical panel met on-site, that's how the additional graphics were added and forwarded into your packet. My understanding is that that may even be forwarded by them at, for the next council meeting as a separate agenda item, is my understanding.
I just know they're very busy, and so, it's a...
Sure.
I was just looking at time frame.
Yeah, as Planner Stockman is scrolling back through the slides to the wetland graphic that had the rectangular boxes on it.
They did add...
That one there is from the TEP panel, our original submittal did not have wetland six, which is another real small pimple one that's in the green, so all of the green ones were added by the technical panel evaluation on-site, and then with that added to the packet, that was an approved wetland delineation, is how my consultants relayed that back to us, and staff will be able to confirm that. My understanding is, with that done, I don't even know if it goes to council, but just considered complete.
Yeah, I never saw a notice of decision come through, that's the only reason, but we'll just make sure.
But we'll, we'll check on that, my understanding is a completed project, yeah.
I was just curious, because we're looking at, it needs to be submitted to, say, council a week before, so we're looking at two weeks to have that, I just was looking at it.
We'll, we'll check if it's been held up because of the Minram issue that staff talked about, where they just wanted to define it, that was one thing, and I guess hearing potentially tonight, how you might proceed, is that there'd be a suggested Minram distance if parcel C comes out of ag, but that while it's in ag, then the, the middle ones that have been cropped would not have a restriction on the property, it would merely be when it is brought out of the ag status. Thank you.
Okay.
Is that, you're adding that to that thin list, Planner Stockman?
Yes, we'll clarify buffers and DNR versus farmed wetlands.
We all understand the changes that we are recommending here?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Hapala.
Could, could the, could summarize the changes that are made, or the planner?
Do you want me to go through them all again?
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine, I will. So, formalize, or make sure we have a notice of decision on the wetland delineation, ensuring that the Minram is done, and the definition of the wetland buffer zones. We will forego buffers on parcel C in ag status, but when brought out of ag status, the buffers will be applied. We have additional information, including lot buildability, location of primary and backup septic sites, and on lowest floor elevation suggestions for the lots, including some designations of the flood elevations or low points along the wetlands, soil borings, any additional if necessary. Street and lot arrangements are revised per P and Z recommendation to allow the future establishment of an east-west local street. In the interim, shared driveway access per county approval will be allowed in parcel A and B from 181st. Parcel A must meet emergency vehicle access requirements in our city ordinance for driveway width and turnaround for emergency vehicles. Park dedication for all three lots shall be paid prior to recording. There shall be no special use permits or flag lot access for parcel A, and all further subdivisions shall be plotted. I think that hit them all, yes?
Okay, I'll, I'll make the motion with Liz's, Liz's comments she just made here, would somebody like to second this? Commissioner Farrell?
Commissioner Hapala, I mean.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, now, I'll open up for any further discussion, any further discussion. Seeing that, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. So, we go into the planning and zone, or the city council meeting, and hopefully, we have this all put together for them.
Thanks for the healthy discussion tonight.
Thank you for coming. Nice to meet you.
Last motion.
A motion adjourned?
Okay, we have, we have a motion adjourned, Commissioner, Schiller made the motion, somebody second it. Commissioner Farrell?
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, you're going to write the...